Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, Superintendent, Board members, staff, the community. Thank you all for coming out this evening. We've got a busy agenda that we're going to get right rolling into. First up is any changes, amendments, additions, or deletions to the agenda? Board Superintendent, do you have any changes this evening?
I have just one, the HR addendum that was added, Item 901, today, and the Board has a copy of that.
Any other changes, Board?
No, sir.
All right, here are none. We'll move on with the agenda as presented. Approval of the minutes. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I recommend approval of the minutes from the School Board Workshop, September 3rd, 2025, the special meeting and public hearing on the final budget, September 8th, 2025, and the regular school board meeting, September 8th, 2025.
So moved.
Second, got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Mr. Dodd. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes 5-0. All right, next up is representation this evening. Recognition of the Mount Dora Community Trust grant of $1.3 million for Mount Dora High School Stadium. Mr. Chad Farnsworth.
Good evening, Chair, Board members, Superintendent. It's my distinct honor to introduce a special presentation on behalf of the Mount Dora Community Trust in support of the Mount Dora High School Stadium renovation project, a transformative initiative that will benefit students, families, and the entire community for generations to come. This project would not be possible without the incredible generosity and leadership of many, and I'd like to begin by offering special thanks to Mr. Rob English, Executive Director of the Mount Dora Community Trust, and his staff for their unwavering support and vision. And I also want to recognize the Bland family, whose major contributions helped lay the foundation for this effort, along with many other donors, and some of which are in the crowd here tonight, and will be recognized whenever our Executive Director, Marlene Strong, comes up. But just all the contributions and their efforts, along with many community members and rallied behind the cause to deliver what's been a long time coming for the students of Mount Dora High School. From the district side, I'd like to acknowledge the outstanding work of Project Manager Charlie Hoff and Director of Maintenance Calvin Wingo, who have taken on this project with dedication and professionalism. We're also excited to be partnering with Mr. Rick Dunn's here from Williams Construction, whose expertise will help bring the vision to life. To share more about the background and significance of this project, I'd like to welcome up Regional Executive Director Marlene Strong to the podium, along with current Principal Kyle Bracewell. And following their remarks, and a few others that might be invited up, I'd like to have Ms. Cunningham representing her district and other board members to come down, and I imagine we'll have a photo op and a check presentation. So at this time, Ms. Strong, Mr. Bracewell, if you could come forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Member, Superintendent, Board Attorney. Thank you for having us tonight. Back in 2020, I was offered the opportunity of a lifetime to go lead the amazing Mount Dora High School, had a wonderful four-year run there, and is now in the very capable hands of Kyle Bracewell. But I noticed when I stepped on that campus several years ago, it was a beautiful, brand-new campus, all but just one thing needed some updating, and that was our stadium that had not been touched in more than 60 years. And at the time, we had a lot of big dreams and ambitions and knew that we needed some help to do that. So with the help of Rob English and his staff and the Mount Dora Community Trust, we rallied the troops. We've done everything from raffling cars to sitting in dunk tanks. I was a waitress at Eden Abbey. We've done all kinds of things to raise money, and we've sold bricks for the hallway, or for the walkway, we've done golf tournaments, lots of things. But I would really like to take a moment and especially thank the Mount Dora Community Trust. Sarah Herrick, Tabitha, have been wonderful. They organized a centennial celebration that brought in more than $30,000 when we celebrated our 100-year anniversary that all went towards this project. And the Mount Dora Community Trust promised a $500,000 matching grant if we could do it. I don't know if Rob thought we might not be able to do this, but we did, and that's thanks to $250,000 from the Bland Charitable Trust Committee, $50,000 from the First National Bank. I see John Pease is in the audience, too. Thank you. This community loves Mount Dora High School, and for good reason. It's a great school, these kids deserve it. So excited to finally see our hard work and efforts come to fruition, and I'm happy to be a part of it, still be a part of the Hurricane family. So thank you, Mr. Bracewell. And if I could have everyone who has had a hand in this, the Mount Dora Community Stadium, I see Stark here, Mr. English, if you guys could come forward and be recognized, and on behalf of Mount Dora High School and Lake County Schools, thank you. Thank you for all of your support and your efforts, and we are so, so appreciative.
Guys, I just want to thank you, everyone that was involved in this. I was there as an Assistant Principal when this got kicked off, and I never dreamed that I would be there serving as the principal when the work finally starts. So to the Board, to Mount Dora Community Trust, to the school board, thank you for your support, and I look forward to everyone seeing this project come to a finish. Thank you.
Well, representing the Mount Dora Community Trust, we also have two graduates from Mount Dora High School that are in the room tonight. Sarah and Stark are both Mount Dora High School graduates that just jumped on top of this like crazy. And then the third one that's indirectly involved, but highly involved, is John. John Pease is a Mount Dora High School graduate, and his oldest son is presently going there in ninth grade, which we were talking about tonight. So John will, son will get the benefit from this. We thank you. We, when we went on this vision as the challenge grant, it was a big grant, a big grant for us, one of our record grants, but more than that, it was a big challenge, and we took it, we ran with it. My neighbor Bill Mathias and I have talked about this over the last four years over the fence, and he's been, he's been guiding me a little bit. But it started with the vision, and Marlene, Marlene, I gotta say, she really jumped on top of this, and we didn't get it done during your tenure there, and I apologize for that, but it's gonna happen. But again, I want to recognize not only the people that contributed to the Mount Dora Community Trust in addition to the 500,000, but we would not be here today in so many different ways without Bill Bland and his charity. And so, again, thank you, John, for the involvement with the Bill Bland Committee and for the bank, because the bank gave $50,000. So we just have so much to be thankful for. Thank you, Chairman, Board Members, Superintendent, and of course Kyle and Marlene, it's just, it's a pleasure to be here. So we have the big check, it won't cash, but we'll do the wire transfer when it's appropriate time for the 1.3 million. But we would love tonight to get the five school board members, oh, we're missing, what, Molly is, where's Molly? Molly's down here, we gotta get Molly, because she's our representative. And Superintendent, if you'll come down here, get behind the big check so we can do the big check presentation, okay?
Let's give it up one more time for Rob English and the Mount Dora Community Trust. Thank you very much. The floor is yours, sir.
Fifty, fifty grand. Fifty grand to talk more, huh? I failed to mention, to me, the star, you know, there's always a star that comes in and helps win the game. The star for me has been Mr. Farnsworth. Where, where did he go? There you are. The star for me has been Chad Farnsworth. Chad, thank you so much for pushing this over the top. Let me tell you, when, when he bit into this as a Bulldog, when he bit, he probably didn't go to the University of Georgia, but when you, when he bit it, when he, when he, I gotta say, you guys have somebody good there. You need to know this, because when he took a hold of it, not only did he get it done, but he communicated with our staff regularly. He's a gem. Thank you, Chad.
As they exit the room, Board, if you don't have any objections, I think I want to move up the Student Advisory Committee report before public input. I'm sure he's got some homework and other things he can do this evening than sitting through the rest. So if you guys don't have any objection, I'm gonna call up Joshua Brown from Mount Dora High School to give the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee report.
Good evening, School Board and Superintendent. My name is Joshua Brown, I'm the proud student body president of Mount Dora High School, and today I'm here to give you guys an update of the SSAC. So the first meeting of the Superintendent's Advisory Committee was held last Monday afternoon, and I am here to give you a brief meeting summary. So our first meeting began with the introduction, followed by a brief overview of the committee's purpose and its roles as student leaders, to serve as a voice for all students by sharing ideas and suggestions with our elected school district officials. In the past, one person has come to give you a monthly update, but our group has decided that each month, a different school will send its representatives, so we all have a chance to speak to you and share something that is happening in our school. So tonight, a few things that is happening in King Country. We proudly had our senior sunrise this morning, had to wake up at 5:30 to set up, but it was a great senior sunrise, and I think all of our seniors had a great time this morning. And also this week is our homecoming week, so we have our big homecoming game on Friday, and we have a whole week full of festivities for our students at Mount Dora High School. So now back to our SSAC report. Each representative shared what they believe to be one of the greatest issues and challenges that the SSAC may want to address this year. So challenges and opportunities are shared included dress code changes, possibility updates to the mental health required training, improvement to school spirit, improving communication and relationships between staff and students, college and career readiness resources to help students better prepare for a life beyond high school, lifetimes, and suggestions for completing college applications and scholarships, as well as the importance of CTE courses and industry certifications. We had some discussions about our priorities, and we narrowed it down to mental health training and college and career readiness resources. Ideas will be shared at the next meeting and related to the school district staff, and will be invited to attend our next meeting. I was also mentioned at the meeting, there is a need for students and their families to receive healthy meals at home. Feeding Florida of Central Florida was recommended as an agency to be considered as a partner so we should group up with and to conduct a food drive as a community service project. We will talk more about this at our next meeting. We are excited to serve on the SSAC this year and look forward to working with the Superintendent and Mr. Felton on behalf of Lake County Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Well done. All right, we are now going to enter our public input section of the meeting. The speaker will be Elizabeth Emery, and as she's coming up, I believe the Superintendent has something she'd like to share.
I do, yes, thank you. First of all, I just want to thank all of our teachers and staff who are here tonight. It's great to see you all. We appreciate your dedication, your presence tonight. I do just want to mention that Lake County Schools continues to work collaboratively with both of our bargaining units through the collective bargaining process, and while we are still very early in negotiations, we both remain committed to finding a fair and fiscally responsible solution. We recognize that you, our teachers, are the heart of our school system, and competitive pay is essential to retaining our best and our brightest and our most talented teachers. Our board and leadership team are focused on supporting our workforce and while we remain financially maintaining our financial health. So thank you again for being here tonight, and I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Emery.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Diane. Thank you, Chair Brandenburg, Board Members, and Superintendent. We're glad to be here to continue our collaboration. Last time I spoke, I spoke a little bit about the impact of one teacher and my why. I want to talk a little bit about the great work that we're doing, and also some of the areas of need and the work that we need to continue to work on. So I appreciate the communication that's coming out about Marathon Health and the Wellness Centers, and want to thank Risk Management Director Rob Oyer and the Joint Leadership Committee for ensuring employees have a voice in the wellness clinics. We've received questions from staff about the status of our premise health clinics, and we're reassuring them that the clinics remain open and they're serving our employees. And after the upcoming session, including one this Wednesday, the Joint Insurance Committee will reconvene to vote. We're really excited that employees are being involved in this process, because their feedback is essential, and we're grateful that you're prioritizing their voice. We also appreciate our ongoing conversations with the Superintendent. Today's meeting was wonderful. We discussed some strategies to support educators and balance workloads, as well as continue our community school efforts. As LCA President, I also want to speak to concerns weighing on educators, as the Superintendent mentioned. For over 50 years, LCA has served as the official bargaining unit for Lake County Schools. We take that role seriously, advocating for fair compensation, manageable workloads, and due process protections. LCA represents the collective voice of Lake County educators. We come with a supermajority support from instructional staff, asking for the tools, time, and respect they need to succeed. This isn't just about instructional staff, it's about every student. Educators know that strong working conditions lead to strong learning conditions. When educators thrive, students thrive. Fair compensation is also essential to sustain the great work they do. Attracting and retaining high-impact educators is key to student success. It takes intentional investment in the people who make student success possible. The educators here today are a reminder that there's still work to be done. We ask for your continued investment and partnership to ensure we deliver world-class public education. We're excited to keep the conversation going and serve as a resource. Let's build on what's working and keep improving all Lake County Schools for all Lake County residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next up will be Ms. Jessica Suwicky.
Good evening, Chair Brandenburg, Superintendent, and Board Members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I am here representing the thousands of educators across our county who dedicate their lives to serving students. At the last meeting, I shared my personal story of how public education profoundly shaped my life and my future. This story was not just about me. It was about what happens when a community invests in its schools and its teachers. Tonight, I stand here not as an individual, but as a voice of educators across Lake County, whose lives are similarly devoted to creating those same opportunity for today's students. As you know, every year, that amount Lake County receives from the state for salaries changes. Last year, the district received $2.7 million, about $900 per educator. This year, that number is closer to $1 million, or about $300 per educator. While every dollar matters, these amounts do not reflect the depth of commitment or the level of responsibility carried by our educators. Behind those numbers are real people who keep this district running. They are the ones staying up late to help students succeed, covering classes during shortages, buying supplies out of their own paychecks, and still showing up every single day with love for their students and pride in their profession. We understand the challenges of balancing a budget, and we appreciate the difficulty, difficult work that goes into these decisions. But we ask that as you deliberate, you keep our educators at the forefront of your thinking. When you invest in them, you invest directly in our students and the future of Lake County. LCA members are committed to our schools and community. We ask for the same commitment in return. Together, we can ensure that Lake County remains a place where dedicated educators wants to stay, and where every child has the opportunity to thrive. Just as a teacher once changed the course of my life, I ask you to make the choices that allow Lake County educators to continue changing lives for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Next up is Ms. Lila Ontario.
You did that really well.
Practiced, about a couple tries.
Yeah. So, good evening, School Board Members, Brandenburg, Mathias, Dodd, Luke, and Cunningham, as well as Superintendent Carnegie. My name's Lila Ontario, I'm the proud president of Lake Community Arts, and I'm here to share some exciting updates on recent arts education initiatives happening across our district. On September 12th, Lake Community Arts was honored to host a professional development day for all K-12 music teachers at Mission Inn. I'm pleased to report that 47 of our 53 music educators attended. Of those, we've already had 25 complete our post-event survey, and I'm thrilled to share that every single response rated the day a five out of five. Right, Ed?
Teachers specifically highlighted the value of collaborative exchange across content areas, band, chorus, and general music, as well as the importance of vertical alignment among feeder programs from elementary through high school. They described the day as highly effective, relevant, and valuable. We're currently exploring the possibility of hosting a follow-up professional development session on January 5th. This time, we hope to expand the invitation to include our visual arts, dance, and theater teachers alongside our music educators. I'm really sad that they left. I can't believe Sarah was here, because I had on here. I'd like to take a moment to express my sincere thanks to Mount Dora Community Trust. Their generous sponsorship made our September professional development possible, and they have gone even further, donating to the transportation fund for the Orlando Philharmonic's Young People's Concerts scheduled for November 14th at Leesburg High School. This support is helping ensure students from across the district have access to transformative arts experiences. Please remember to attend, all of you guys, the VIP event for the Young People's Concert that will be at Lake Mineola High School on Thursday, November 13th at 9:30 a.m. You are encouraged to stay and witness the concert yourselves, which will begin at 10:30 and last for about 45 minutes. Thank you for your continued supports of arts education in Lake County. I look forward to updating you on our progress and future collaborations, and remember, you're always invited to come and sing with our Lake Community Chorus on Tuesday night, 6:30 at the Clermont Arc. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ontario. Next up is Mr. Ed Anderson.
I still gotta turn my name, so add one more to that, too. Got it. How are you tonight? No speeches, no nothing prepared. I told you last time, you just looked someone in the eye. We talked earlier that there are compensation for the teachers. I've been doing this 28 years. I've taught every grade level, pre-K through college. Just nothing in music I haven't done. I love my job, y'all know that, but I'm tired. I'm tired of having to find out which bill I have to pay and which one I have to let go, and I'm tired of having to go to the grocery store and see, can I get this, can I get that? I've got, me and my wife and I both work for Lake County Schools. It's hard, I'm not gonna lie. It's hard, you get tired of saying, do I have enough gas to get to work in the morning? Am I gonna make it home? I'm tired, and I don't want to leave, I don't, I love this job. My wife loves this job. We come home every night, the kitchen table, everything is covered with school supplies and work she has to do. She's almost got her doctorate in education, but yet she has a master's degree that she doesn't receive pay for either. I'm tired. I'm not gonna quit, but I'm tired. I just keep saying that, but it's very difficult right now, working multiple jobs and doing this job as well. So I ask you to please keep these things in consideration when you're deliberating the responses. I'm gonna give it my all, you know I will, but we really do need that consideration coming up. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Next up, I think I'm gonna get this name wrong. Leigh Anne Petrelli, probably nowhere close on the first name, but. Petrasili, yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm a grade five teacher at Groveland Elementary, and I have to admit, I'm sad too. I can really feel the pain. At my age, I shouldn't have to take a second job, but I did, and I actually had a call-in, because I'm here tonight to represent the people that couldn't be here, that are probably working their second job. It's a shame when we have degrees the way we have our degrees, and yet we have no pay. I feel, I'm almost insulted, I really am. When I came down here from Connecticut, when they told me what the salary was eight years ago, I thought it was quarterly. I said to her, oh, is that quarterly? She said, no, that's annual. I was flabbergasted. So to be in a school district, I mean, I commend us for reaching that, but how did we get there? We got there because of the people in this room and the people out in the, out in the schools. And I have to admit, it's a shame when I'm here that I have to fight for a penny, and I'm in the same boat. I mean, I had to decide how much gas I needed to get here and back. I shouldn't have to. I shouldn't have to, at my age, feel that I need to pick up a second job, just to make ends meet, between everything else going up, but my salary. And it's, it's hard. Every day, it's hard, but I do love my job. I love my students. I was able to move students from, last year, I had students that were Level 1 by the end of the year for the FAST. None of my students were Level 1, I had over 45 students, not one was a Level 1. Did I get commended? I didn't get any extra pay, I didn't get a bonus. I did get a pat on the back. It was a third of my students, and I have many students in my class that are ESE students, so I feel very proud I was able to move those low ones into twos and threes. That's what got us to an A district, not just me, but other people as well. I worked very, very hard, but I don't feel it in my paycheck. And I have one last thing. I have a teacher friend that actually had to resign this summer because she couldn't afford to be a Lake County teacher anymore. 22 years as a science and math teacher, loved her job, tears. She said, I can't afford to work for Lake County anymore. She'll leave the career and pursue another avenue, because she couldn't make ends meet after 22 years, because her second job closed up, that was floating her, Lake County wasn't the one. She says, I really feel like I'm paying Lake County. It's hard, you're losing teachers, you're not gonna be that destination to place to teach if you don't show us in some compensation, because it's hard. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Arlene Silveira.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Superintendent, and members of the Board. My name is Arlene Silveira, and I am a fifth-grade teacher, reading and social studies at the beautiful Beverly Shores Elementary. I'm also a proud member of this district's community. Teaching has been my calling and my passion. My late husband also served this district as a middle school, science, and mathematics teacher. Since his passing, I have been the sole provider for my household. On one teacher's salary, I pay my mortgage, utilities, homeowners association dues... On one teacher's salary, I pay my mortgage, utilities, homeowners association dues, car payment, and other necessities. Here's a side note. I also want to share something deeply personal. When my husband passed away, he was a high-impact teacher who dedicated his life to educating children in this very district. I did not receive even a sympathy letter from the district. That absence of acknowledgement hurt deeply. It made me feel invisible, even after years of service from both of us. In past years, I supplemented my income by tutoring, but that opportunity has been removed. Additionally, some stipends that helped offset the cost of living have been eliminated. The rising costs of housing, food, and utilities make it harder each month to make ends meet. I share this, not to complain, but to highlight a reality that many educators in our district are living. We give our time, our expertise, and our hearts to our students, yet many of us struggle to support our own families. Competitive compensation is not just about fairness, it's about stability. When teachers are financially secure, they can focus fully on their students, stay in the profession they love, and continue to build the excellence this district strives to attain. The excellence that Lake County Schools have achieved and is now being proudly displayed is a direct result of our teachers' dedication, skill, and hard work. However, that excellence continues to go unrewarded in compensation. Applause without compensation is not true appreciation. I respectfully ask the board to prioritize a meaningful raise for teachers. Investing in us is investing in our students and the future of our community. Thank you for your time and for listening to my story.
Thank you, Ms. Silveira. Next up is Alexis Lewis.
Yes, please. We share a pair of glasses between our classrooms for when we forget it. Sorry. Getting old is hard, guys. All right, so, good evening, School Board members and superintendent. My name is Alexis Lewis, and I'm here to talk to you tonight about the importance of our teachers and the need to provide teachers and staff better pay. I've been an involved parent of a Lake County School student for the last thirteen years. My children have moved through Pine Ridge, Gray Middle, South Lake. When I first moved to Lake County, I became active in the PTO in Pine Ridge, and I often volunteered at the school and in the classroom. I saw firsthand the amazing things our teachers do for their students. I watched as teachers bought basic necessities for their students from their own pockets and paid to make their classrooms warm and inviting. I saw teachers working well past their contract hours to grade and prepare for the next lesson. The dedication of our teachers has not changed as my students have moved through the grade levels. A few years ago, I transitioned into teaching myself, and I feel like I found my calling. I love, love, love teaching, and I love my students, every single one of them. I find myself spending from my own pocket to buy supplies for my students and to make my classroom warm and inviting, and I find myself working well outside of contract hours just to get the job done and to ensure my students receive the best. This year, I have one hundred and eighty-six students rostered to me. I teach ninth-grade English, which, those of you who don't know, is a double-tested subject. I'm tested both on FAS scores and I'm tested on writing. It took me four and a half hours to grade a one-paragraph response for my students and leave meaningful feedback to them. I get forty-five minutes to plan, okay? This time, it's to grade, plan upcoming lessons, make copies, and attend any meetings that are scheduled. So if I'm lucky, maybe, I have twenty-three minutes to actually grade. If I graded only during those twenty-three minutes, it would take me twelve days to leave meaningful feedback on that assignment. Think of how many assignments teachers give that must be graded in a timely manner. Without feedback, how can our kids grow? How can they know what they need to change and do better? There is no way for a teacher to get this accomplished unless we work for free on our own time at home, taking away time from my family and my activities that I would like to do outside of school. How would students improve if teachers stopped dedicating their free time to scaffold, plan, and grade? Teachers like me are not uncommon. All across my campus at South Lake, I see this over and over again in every teacher that I work with. We all work hard and are devoted to our students. We give so much of ourselves to help them be successful. All we ask is that we're paid what we deserve. What Lake County Schools, that Lake County Schools sees the value of their teachers and work to pay them what they earn every single day through their devotion, dedication, and time commitment. If we want to keep our experience high achieving teachers, we must pay better. So I implore you, please, please do everything in your power to take the steps necessary to make better pay possible for our teachers. Increase our performance pay, increase our base salary, show us through compensation that we are valued and appreciated. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Next up is Tara Quinn.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Tara Quinn, and I am a Lake County resident, a taxpayer, and a proud grade-nine ELA teacher at South Lake High School. That's my neighbor over there. This is my twenty-third year as a classroom teacher, although only my second year on Lake County. I hold a master's degree in educational leadership, and I'm a National Board certified teacher. In fact, today, I learned that I have been rated highly effective for my first year in Lake County. I was really proud of that. Being a teacher is a large part of my identity, and I'm a teacher because I care about kids. Three years ago, I moved to Florida from a northern state, and for the most part, my move has been very positive. I have found a home away from home at South Lake, where I work with some of the most dedicated and hardworking teachers and administrators. From my very first day, I was welcomed, I felt valued. And having worked in schools in other states, I can say that the teachers I have met here in Florida are among the most dedicated and committed. However, I have faced some challenges teaching here in Lake County in the areas of compensation and working conditions. The salary I make in Lake County is not enough to sustain me as a single person. In fact, I am not able to cover my college-aged son, who's with me here today, for support on my health insurance. That's hard. If I did cover him, I would not meet my monthly expenses. That's reality. As a result, I am forced to find creative ways to earn money on the side, and that takes time and energy. Which leads me to working conditions. I teach a tested subject. Grade-nine ELA students are tested in both reading and writing. There is so much prep work required to prepare my students to face these challenging tests. Now, last year, I had one hundred and forty students on my roster. This year, I have one hundred and seventy students. That is like having an additional class added to my plate with no additional prep time or compensation. So the end result is that I am required to put in hours of additional time outside of school unpaid. This connects back to my earlier point that I am also working on the side to make ends meet. How can I do both? And let's face it, teaching is exhausting, and burnout is real. I want to continue pouring into my students, making them better in their pursuit of excellence. In order to do that, I need your support. Lake County teachers need your support in the area of better wages, affordable health insurance, and manageable class size. I believe that by investing in teachers, you are investing in students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Next up is Courtney Allender.
Hi, good evening, Superintendent Corrigan, and board members and chairperson. My name is Courtney Allender. I began teaching in 2016 with one goal. I wanted to make an impact, not just by teaching math, but by helping students believe in themselves. I wanted them to discover a love for math, or at the very least, feel like success was possible. In my time teaching geometry and A's Thinking Skills, my students consistently outperformed the state, with end-of-course exam pass rates ranging from seventy to ninety percent of my students passing, while the state average hovers between forty-eight to fifty-four percent. My performance reviews reflected that success as well, with my evaluation ratings being always highly effective, except my very first year, which still was effective. What meant more were the smiles and thanks from students then and now. I still run into former students at Chick-fil-A, grocery stores, and ice cream parlors who tell me what a difference I made in their lives and in education. But while the impact was lasting, the compensation was not. Despite pouring over fifty hours a week into my classroom, working summers and breaks to improve my curriculum, and even picking up an extra job or two to make ends meet, the budget just didn't add up. Over the last few years, the growth in Clermont, Mineola, Groveland, and surrounding areas has led to a tremendous amount of people, which has also increased basic needs like housing, utilities, taxes on raw property, and our insurance. While I calculated for myself it was a thirteen percent increase, my income only grew by two-point-five percent at its highest. We know Maslow's hierarchy, that survival is a foundation to everything else, but when I couldn't meet that foundational need for myself, and being sleep-deprived, my health declining, and my relationships fading because of the toll, I knew something had to change. So despite all those phenomenal things I told you earlier, last spring, I left teaching. I found a job that provided me with higher pay, better benefits, less stress, and fewer hours. And while I miss my students dearly, I don't regret choosing myself and my survival. While my situation may not be common, the hard truth is, I'm not the only one. Talented teachers are leaving Lake County or seriously considering it, not because they've lost their passion, but because they can't afford to stay. Of the half a dozen students that made an impact on my own two children's lives, who did go through Lake County from kindergarten through graduation, only two of those students or teachers still remain in Lake County. Many have gone to Florida Virtual, Orange County, or just left the career. I want, I understand that Lake is in negotiation for increases, and I hope that these decisions lead to positive results. If we want to retain great educators in Lake County, compensation tied to performance isn't just a perk, it's a necessity. Our students deserve excellent teachers, and excellent teachers deserve to know that we appreciate their dedication and hard work, that we want them to stay where they belong, right here in our Lake County classrooms. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Allender. Next up, last name is Cruz Guerrero.
Buenas noches. Good evening, members of the board and superintendent. Teachers deserve a raise. It's more than fair, it's overdue. Every day, we dedicate long hours after school, weekends included, preparing lessons and grading. Personally, I have spent long hours on weekends prepping for my Spanish courses, time that is never compensated. And what about our intellectual property? In this fast-changing world of technology, teachers are no longer just educators, we are content creators. The lessons, resources, and digital materials with design come directly from our creativity and expertise. Yet, this work is never recognized or compensated. Many teachers prepare for multiple subjects, and this extra workload is ignored when salary raises are discussed. And while some of us receive differentials for advanced degrees, there is no recognition for bilingual teachers who use their second language daily to support students. That skill should also matter. Some teachers also commute long distances to serve this beautiful county. I drive over an hour to work and often two hours to get home. I live in Pointe, San Antonio, Florida, and work for Lake County Schools. With gas prices and rising living costs, two-thirds of my salary disappears into basic necessities. It's unsustainable. Two-thirds of my salary. We are dedicated to our profession, but fairness requires compromise. We pour our hearts into this profession, but there must be balance. We love what we do, but passion alone cannot pay the bills. It's time for the board to meet us where we stand. We don't ask for charity, we ask for fairness. Teachers deserve to live, not just survive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz Guerrero. Next up is Ms. Shelley Mora.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Mora. This is my twenty-first year teaching in Lake County. I have a master's degree in education, and as of today, I am once again a highly effective teacher. Yet, being a highly effective teacher with a master's degree, I only get paid a few thousand dollars more than a brand-new teacher. As other districts have discovered ways to solve pay compression, Lake County has not. Lake County continues to reward new teachers, but is chosen to show no financial recognition to the veteran teachers that have stayed in Lake County. For months, we've heard that financial, we've heard of the financial deficit that Lake County currently has. Instructional positions have been cut, no longer following the class-size laws that were once voted for. So now, teachers have more students, more work, and still one of the lowest-paid districts in the state. This past summer, I was in my classroom, yes, I was in my classroom this summer because a new school was built and portables were removed from our school, and many teachers at my school had to move their classrooms. The parking lot at my school looked like a school day in the middle of July, as many teachers that were there, working with no pay, not even for comp days, but with no choice to spend our summer in our classrooms if we wanted our rooms ready for the start of the new school year. But Lake County doesn't recognize the extra work we put in the summertime because we had to move classrooms. Add to that, we had nothing but frustration with insurance plans being canceled and prescriptions being denied throughout the past summer. I'm frustrated. I too am tired. I too work two jobs. Yet, I try to be hopeful for change, but how many years have I been hopeful? This isn't my first time speaking to you guys. Yet, I'm still hopeful. I'm hopeful that Lake County will consider how living costs have increased greatly in our county and find a way to increase compensation for the teachers who are responsible for making Lake County an A district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mora. Last card I've got is Christine DeDonna.
Greetings to everyone in the room. I am also an employee of the district. I'm a school counselor. I've worked in the district since July of 2002. I've worked at two schools. I've had some of my same kids that were little babies at the elementary school graduate, and I've tried to follow them throughout their lives. So, one of my recent concerns that's kind of been heartbreaking for me, and I know that it didn't come from the board, but bear with me, the reminder emails from various places about social media presence. I'm that girl that's a forever counselor, because I learned that from my elementary school counselor, who's one of my Facebook friends and who was my graduate school teacher. So, I like to be there for them forever, and I'm nervous about keeping some of my friends and former students and families on my social media, kind of not because of things I'm gonna say, but because I have surrounded myself with such a diverse array of people in my life, because I'm not the one who's quick to drop people just because we disagree. I've always tried to bring people to a center, to where we can try and agree to disagree and be respectful about it and just be kind to people. And I know that sounds really simple and basic in 2025, but here I am, I just want people to be kind, okay? And so, I just feel like, as someone who grew up as a have-not in a town full of haves, where it was really apparent when you were a have-not, and I had this great counselor who really helped me, and I've tried to do that for years for my kids, and I've stood in the gap, I've paid for things besides the school supplies we all pay for, I've paid for grab-and-go foods because we have those kids who need something in their belly, but they won't ask for it or admit that they didn't have anything at home. I have paid for field trips, I've paid for prom tickets, I've paid for caps and gowns, and on and on and on. One year, I even secretly, without the child knowing it was me, outfitted a young lady head to toe for her best friend's quinceañera because she couldn't afford it. I stretch myself because I know what it feels like to be a have-not, and I don't want that for my kids, ever. And it's been a real honor to be able to stay with my kids for years after they graduate the way that my- the way that my Emily has been there for me. Um, but I don't feel like I, I feel safe doing that because it is such a diverse array of people with diverse views in the world, and they say things that we don't always find warm and fuzzy, and since some of these kids are, were a little rough around the edges, they're still a little rough around the edges, but they're good people. And I'm hoping that you will support me and feeling secure, continuing to be a forever person for my kids and families, and help me have enough resources so that I can continue to share what I have with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeDonna.
That is all the public input cards we received this evening. Um, I'm sure the other board members will give some comments, a board member feedback at the end, but I just want to say briefly, thank you all for coming here this evening. We do appreciate you, we do value you, um, and I certainly look forward to continued conversations with our bargaining leadership team, um, Elizabeth and Jessica, and the rest of your leadership team, to trying to find a meaningful solution, um, and work through these challenges together. But thank you, um, we hear you, and we are looking forward to finding a resolution together. So thank you for being here.
All right. Um, we did the superintendent student advisory committee report already, so next up is item six-point-oh-two, the attorney report. Mr. Cole?
Uh, no report.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, also no unfinished business this evening, so moving on to the consent agenda, um, superintendent, superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I do, but before I make that recommendation, I just want to mention that on tonight's agenda, there are two annually board adopted resolutions, including the Anti-Bullying Month Resolution, which recognizes October as Anti-Bullying Month, and reaffirms the district commitment to save supportive learning environments, as well as Attendance Awareness Month Resolution, which proclaims September as Attendance Awareness Month, highlighting the importance of regular attendance for student achievement. There was a third one, which was the Red Ribbon Week. I'm not sure that that one made it to the agenda, but it should also be on, you have it, it's also on consent, or should be on consent. If not, anyways, Red Ribbon Week designates October twenty-third through thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week, supporting student awareness and education about living drug-free. Given that these are reported, are given to you annually, you, you may approve them tonight, um, by doing so on the consent agenda item, um, as well as full copies available of each resolution on board docs. And so with that, I recommend approval of consent agenda items eight-point-oh-one through ten-oh-seven.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Dr. Luke. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye, passes five-oh. Um, we also do not have any discussion items this evening, so moving on to the superintendent's report.
Just a quick reminder that next Tuesday, there is a workshop with RSM, and as well as followed by an executive session, so nine-thirty, um, and that's on a Tuesday because of a conflict on Monday, so just make sure that's on your calendar. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Um, board member comments. Dr. Luke.
Um, I would first like to say thank you to the leadership at Araya Colle Academy. Um, we spent the day, Mr. Dodd and I got to spend the day with our current students at Araya Colle Academy. We did instructional learning walks, and we focused on basic foundations of reading and classroom management, and we had twenty-seven students in attendance, and we had a great debrief, and the learning was led by, um, several of our current, um, leaders and teachers, and it was a phenomenal day. Um, Ms. Emmerich, who many of you know and hold as dear as I do as an educator, actually teared up a couple of times just being overwhelmed with how productive and encouraging the day was, and the, the students were really reflective and appreciative, and it's always just, um, it's always a great day to spend time in schools. So we have a, another meeting next week, um, with our second semester students at Sawgrass Bay, and I'm looking forward to just as a productive day, and it's always wonderful to have the partnerships that we have with the schools. So I'm grateful for that, and I think that's probably what makes it hard to sit up here and, um, and know your frustration because you do your job beautifully. And so we appreciate you being here tonight, and we are concerned, and we are listening. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Mrs. Cunningham.
Good evening. Uh, first of all, I'd like to congratulate those of you that are present, and ones that are not physically with us in the room tonight, who recently received your scores and know that you are effective and highly effective. You know, that is a personal milestone for you, and certainly, you know, we are proud of you. Uh, we certainly recognize the effort and the hard work that you had to put in to be able to say that. So congratulations, best in that glory, and enjoy that. Um, I had the opportunity last week to go to Eustis Middle, where there was an Olympian, uh, a bronze medalist in boxing, speaking to the students, and it was quite enlightening. Um, he had written a book, uh, and it was a motivational book, about how to set your goals and how to work toward those goals, and he shared with the students about how he decided when he was very young, eight-years-old, that he was going to the Olympics. And he made it, and not only did he make it, but he was able to walk away with a medal. That's quite an accomplishment, and I think the students there greatly enjoyed it. I'd also like to express my gratitude to the community of Mount Dora. It is always nice to be surrounded by people who care, and people who are willing to give of their goods to make sure that everyone is okay. I want to very quickly share something with you. In nineteen eighty-two, I moved to Lake County to be a teacher. I did that without knowing anyone. It's been a long time, and I'm still here. And what I want to share with you tonight is, you don't go unseen. When I first came to Lake County, I made eleven thousand dollars. Can you imagine that? And while I realize no one can live on that, that was a long time ago, and that was a very small amount of money. So if you will please just have patience, have a little faith, and know that we do care, and we are going to do the very best that we can, I think you will find that your tenure here will be very rewarding. So thank you for all that you do, and thank you for showing up tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Mr. Dodd.
In nineteen eighty-two, I think I was getting potty-trained.
Uh, I didn't, I didn't ask you anything about you.
No comment over here.
I'd been a little personal.
I thought you were hydrated by the time you were four.
I was not four. I was, I was not four. I was not four in nineteen eighty-two. No. Um, all right. Now, um, yeah, I, I, um, so I was a political science major in college, and one of the things that I always, um, took great admiration of was people who came to participate in the governmental process. Uh, certainly, I think government should be open, it should be transparent, and it, and it requires the participation of, of everybody that's here tonight. You know, there are so many nights we sit here in front of an empty room, and it, you know, if people only knew the half the things on the agenda, I think they'd participate. Uh, certainly, tonight, I'm really thankful to have your participation, and one thing that really resonates and sticks out to me is that line about investing in teachers and you're also investing in students. I heard a few, a few of you say that, and I don't think that statement is lost on this board, I don't think it's lost on this superintendent. Um, and certainly, we are committed, um, to a collaborative relationship with LCA. I'm really grateful and thankful for the relationship we have, and I know that, uh, we will both be faithful to the bargaining process, and, uh, you know, I understand we've got the executive session in a couple of weeks, and, and we're still trying to understand exactly where our enrollment is and, and things of the sort. Uh, I had a, a number of teachers reach out to me over the last couple of weeks, um, and I'm thankful that that was not the tone here tonight, but the, some of the remarks I heard from the reach-outs were, I can't believe the board has already turned down raises or denied us any salary increase, and, and that's not exactly how that process works. We obviously have, uh, you know, a collective bargaining process, where the two sides work collectively and collaboratively to reach some sort of conclusion, and, and it's disappointing that I don't think the state's ever gonna send us enough money to pay you what you're worth. Um, you know, we talked about that million dollars, and, um, and so I, I think, superintendent, you had shared a message as some media partners were reaching out, and that's encouraging, uh, everybody to participate in that process, and also share with our state legislators the importance of public education and, and what it does, and we've heard the stories of the whys the last few weeks of, of why we do what we do, and why we've become teachers, and, and the impact that we all have on students, and, and I, I think that, you know, in a very challenging, uh, world of, of competition, you know, that public schools have not faced before, there are a lot of choices that people have in, in the, in their child's education, and, uh, I believe that we are, we are a great choice. I mean, we are an A district, and it's, and it's not because of chance, but it's because of design, and it's people like all of you who are here, and the people who are at home watching that got us to this point, and I don't think any of that is lost on this board. Uh, so with all that being said, we really welcome and thank you for your participation, and please help us carry that torch, uh, because we, we know, we know the value, we know the value of teachers, and, um, and we're gonna do our very, very best. And, um, all that, if I could shift gears for one quick moment, um, I had a very lovely visit out to Pine Ridge Elementary this past week. Uh, they came before the board last week, uh, receiving some recognition as a PBIS model school, and so I said, you know what? I've heard that recognition for them year after year after year. I'd like to go learn a little bit more about what they do and what that means to them, and so I got a chance to go out there and visit them and, and find out exactly what they do, and, and how they motivate the kids, and, and, and what their data looks like. And, um, I was very impressed. Uh, it takes a lot of energy and buy-in from everybody in the school to make that system work as well as it does, uh, and the kids are motivated. And what's even more motivating is that when I looked at their data, I can see how they're, you know, trending lower than they have been year over year in, in terms of disciplinary rates, and, and what their contact with parents looks like and that level of involvement. Anyway, it was, it was just such an encouraging visit, and, uh, and I, I always love finding the good in kids, and, and they've certainly found a lot of ways to do that, so, uh, I was thankful for them to come visit the board, uh, two weeks ago, and, uh, I was thankful for the invitation, the chance to go out and see it in action. It's very well done.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Mr. Mathias.
So for the first time, I get to look out and see a small part of what made us an A-rated district, so thank you very much. Thank you. We hear you, and I just need to give you some now reality check. We were, we're underfunded by about twelve million dollars over last year. The FEFP formula, which determines what we get per student, we actually are sixty-fifth out of sixty-seven counties in that funding. When I came on the board, um, thirteen years ago, I looked at that as a key way, that's twelve million dollars that, if we were just at average, that we don't get. So I know that we have partnered with you going to Tallahassee, I've gone to Tallahassee, I carry the FEP, FE, FEFP formula in my trunk of my car, you can follow me out, I'll give you a copy. That is what determines our funding. It was interesting that Congressman Fine, he wanted to tour Mount Dora High School. And so he came, as he were, we were touring, and I thought, what would I have to say to him? Initially, he had gotten my name and wanted to meet me because I had complained about our president freezing our Title-I funds. When that was released, he called, his aide called and said, are you happy? I said, I'm happy, so we don't need to meet. He goes, oh, no, he wants to meet you. So we did. He was in the Florida House, and he was over K-12 appropriation. That piqued my interest because that's where the funding for our per student and the FEFP is approved. So I then went into a dialogue with him, and he sat back, and he said, you're screwed. The big counties control the money, and you're never gonna make any progress. Now, I will tell you that while, um, I was shocked at, at the honesty, I finally appreciated it. And I think that until collectively we all come together and say we value public education, I'm talking about anyone that's hearing me out there, not in this room, because you all do, you're there every day, you're touching kids, your stories touch my heart, right? I have, my son's wife is a second-year teacher, so I know that when she outfitted her classroom, who paid for it was her father-in-law. That's who paid for it. I know what that looks like, right? So, um, it would, it would be outrageous for us not to do something after y'all, all the hard work y'all have done. So we're going to work, and every rock is being turned, uh, Mr. Farnsworth, the superintendent, this board's commitment. It probably is not gonna reach the goals that you want, but know we're doing the absolute best we can. That's all I can say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. Um, to wrap, I wanted to briefly again thank Mount Door Community Trust for their support this evening, but to make the point of recognizing Marlene, Chad, Calvin, Charlie, the rest of the team at the district that made this happen, as Marlene mentioned, this was a four-year process from a dream to a reality, and certainly not that this is gonna take four years on what we're talking about this evening, but the amount of effort that went into making that happen is the exact amount of effort that Chad and Guido and their team, and Elizabeth and Jessica on your team, put into these bargaining processes and making a dollar stretch as far as it possibly can. Uh, so you have our commitment that we're gonna continue to do everything we can to support you on the fine work that you do, um, and find a meaningful resolution, and continue to work with our legislatures on getting some well-deserved funding back in the classroom where it belongs. But again, thank you all for being here. We sincerely appreciate you and what you do, and are gonna continue to do what we can, uh, to make up that difference. So thank you very much. Um, any other comments this evening? Any objection to adjourning?
No, sir.
Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.